And.
Okay, now go.
Okay, well, good morning, everyone, and a hello from South Dakota. It's uh we got beautiful weather. We got a little hail yesterday, but we happened to be in a casino at the time, so all went good, you know? Um, welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June eleventh of two thousand and twenty four. And in person is Don Schwenker, an infligal. I assume I can't see Lisa, but Lisa is there, Lisa Smith or auditor. I assume Bjorn is there. And I assume Luann and Mary's there. Is that correct?
This morning.
No press.
Well, we can let loose then, huh?
Somewhere in South Dakota we hear.
I'm in Hills, I'm in Hills City. That's where I'm at, so. Anyway, first on our agenda today is uh open, we'll open the public hearing uh to the intent to improve a reclassified part of two hundred and sixty seventh street in Richland Township. So we'll open a public hearing. I did not receive any phone calls and our comments on it. Is there anybody else online that I can't see?
Oh.
No, I did not hear any comments or received anything.
There's nobody else in office either.
Okay, well, that's as simple as that. Why I didn't hear anything either, so.
Close the public hearing?
Second thought.
Have a motion and second close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Um, next on my agenda, which just went away. Um, let's try it again.
Jayden Shekel's up to talk about the county engineering.
Okay, so Jayden Shekel is next on the agenda, our assistant county engineer. Um, good morning.
Morning. Uh, so first on the agenda is as it relates to two sixty seventh street, the level C portion. Um, we have drafted up and we have drafted up and a funding agreement as well as an easement agreement. So first is the funding agreement, which just stipulates uh what portion of roadway is being improved, a reclassified to level A. Uh, the public hearing was held this morning. Um, most of it just goes through how the cost sharing is split out with seventy-five percent uh of the total cost of approve that road is shall be borne to the applicant and the remaining twenty-five shall be borne on the county. Uh, sent that to the McHughes, uh, and they actually have signed it, the funding agreement for that, so. Uh, so that's the first document. Second one is just an easement agreement, which is just for for improving two sixty seventh does entail replacing a crossroad tube and uh due to improving the road, we gotta meet certain standards for road width, um, clear zone, all that. So when replacing that culvert, the culvert gets longer, so it'll extend outside of our existing right of way on the McHughes side of the road. So this is just a easement agreement, them allowing us essentially a twenty-two foot wide additional strip along that stretch of road for hundred foot length, so. Uh, and they also have signed off on that, so it's just for us to maintain that cover of the future that we have permanent easement to access that. So uh, so they have signed both the funding and easement agreement, and this is all coming right from our road improvement policy as well, so. Uh, we don't see any issues with it, so I guess we recommend approval of the funding agreement and as well as the easement agreement.
For sure.
On second thought.
The motion and second to approve the funding and easement agreements for two hundred and sixty seventh street as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So on the heels of that, then, is resolutions regarding two sixty seven. The first resolution, and I'll let Lisa say the number, but uh first resolution is to basically rescind the existing resolution that originally established this portion of level C. Uh, to rescind that one as well as to reclassify, shouldn't say reclassify, reestablish what the new limits of the level C will be, so.
For the whole road or just this?
For the whole road. So first res, there's two resolutions. The first one is to rescind and reestablish. So what that one's gonna do is if you have the original resolution set, this portion of roadway here is level C, it's gonna rescind that and establish this portion as level C only.
Okay.
And then the second resolution is to establish this portion as level A, so that way we did it that way to make it clear what the steps that have basically occurred to get to this point.
And just out of curiosity from my memory, where are we reinstalling the gates?
They will be approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet east of where they currently are.
Okay, so just before the banks get real steep.
Yes, yep.
Well, it's unapproved.
So your first resolution is resolution number ten thirty-nine dash zero six dash eleven dash twenty twenty-four, which is to reestablish the road. So that's the establishment of the road. That's your first, your first one is ten thirty-nine. Make a motion to approve ten thirty-nine, okay?
Okay, I apologize, but my agenda.
Then we got, I thought it was resetting that we got to rescind the ninety-eight.
Yeah, that and that I have a number six, ten dash ten dash twenty-seven dash ninety-eight.
Correct, and then right behind it at the same time, the same resolution is ten thirty-nine. So this this first resolution is a two-part resolution. It does two things. It rescinds and then it reestablishes.
Okay, I I I don't have the second number.
She gave it. That's the ten, ten thirty-nine, oh six, eleven, twenty twenty-four?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to rescind and.
Rescind six, ten, ten, twenty-seven, ninety-eight.
And establish. And establish.
Ten thirty-nine, oh six, eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Just confused.
Resolution as presented. Thank you. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Then the next resolution is ten forty dash zero six, six dash eleven dash twenty twenty-four. I might be motion to approve resolution ten forty.
Second.
Have motion and second to approve resolution as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then next is a couple entrance permits. First one will kind of end this two sixty seventh discussion. So first one is for Monica and Jamie McHugh on two sixty seventh street, Richland Township, section eighteen. Uh, it's for the entrance that is will now be in the improved level A portion. Uh, we did our site distances really only from the west because the east end will be level C and it's gated, so uh no issues as far as site distance. Um, due to the shape of the land, their driveway will not need a culvert because it all slopes away from the road. It continues to slope away, so the culverts need it, so. Uh, pretty straightforward, knowing that the road will be improved to level A, so I recommend approval on this first entrance permit.
You're moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve uh entrance permit for Monica McHugh as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Uh, next is an entrance permit for Adam Rolling on four hundred and thirty-fifth avenue or Z thirty-four uh north of Preston in the Van Mier Township of section sixteen. Uh, so he wants to put a new residential entrance for his house on the property line of his property and property of Olson Cattle, uh, because eventually he's going, it's due to grade, he's gonna have a longer drive, but it's due to the steepness. He wants a new one, and eventually the existing one that's in place will be removed after Z thirty-four gets overlaid or just prior to what have you, but uh wants the new entrance on that property line, and so part of that, which we've done this in the past, as well last year, actually, uh, we wrapped up an agreement that has to be notarized between both property owners that, you know, that the adjacent property owner is also willing to allow the shared entrance essentially on the property line, so. Um, the this agreement has been signed and notarized by both parties, so. Uh, it does require a culvert extension because that driveway that he, so there is an existing entrance there. He wants to widen it so he can use it as his, and but part of that would be also to extending the culvert, so. Again, straightforward, everything meets site distance. Uh, being as they signed the agreement, we don't see any issues, so recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion and second to approve the entrance right for Adam Rolling as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.
Uh, next up is a couple of utility permits. The first one is for MMEU uh on two hundred and twenty-third avenue, just east of town here. Uh, Macoka Township, sections twenty and twenty-nine. Uh, very similar, almost identical to what Bernard Lost Nation is doing on that road where they're plowing in or boring conduits as far out to the right ways possible, but given the type of terrain with the bluff outcroppings and what have you, they may have to bump in closer to the road to avoid some outcroppings, but um, everything will be four bit deep and as far out as possible from the road, so. Recommend approval on this one.
A motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit to MMEU as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And last is utility permit for Preston Telephone Company on a hundredth street on the Jackson Township of section thirty-four. All they're doing is borrowing a fiber optic from an existing handle underneath the gravel road to uh the address of three, five, zero, zero, three, a hundredth street, so just boring a new service across underneath the road, so. Okay, true.
Sorry.
I have motion and second to approve the utility permit for Preston Telephone Company as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I had. Uh, we're gonna reach out to them and ask for, they're the contractor doing the Y sixty-one overlay from Cottonville to sixty-two, but they originally planned to start around the mid-June, so obviously we're getting to that point, but just wanted to kind of nail down our day from them. Uh, I was expecting to be likely next week, they have to move their plant into the Rockdale quarry. Uh, and there's been a lot of trailers there, so feel like it's not too far off here, maybe next week, hopefully they start paving, but I'll reach out to make sure, but you know, that's will be ongoing for a while, like we talked about in the past. Um, day labor, that one that we mentioned a couple weeks ago, where Dan Schrader might start due to other bridge projects flooding. Well, water's receded and uh, he's gonna do it like he normally does in the fall, which is fine, but so change the schedule there a little bit and. Uh, mid-July-ish, maybe late July is when he would plan to start one hundred and eighty-fourth avenue south of town here, so.
Good.
Well, that's all we have for construction projects. Three oh eight's all, three oh eight street is all done, so.
Hi, this is. Running very early this morning.
Had a bit of moisture, um, should check basically where they.
I've got a whole lot of background noise there. I can't hear. Is there more than one talking at one time?
Yeah, go ahead now.
Uh, so yeah, I was gonna reach out. I know they have been uh, last week they were short-staffed, so they were limited to what they get done. Uh, this week they, well, yesterday they started a whole bunch and are bringing it in and rocking this morning, so uh, I believe they're working in the Otter Creek area right now, so. Uh, but we've had plenty of moisture this year, which is good. Last year, obviously ran into the scenario where we didn't have near enough moisture. This year we seem to have plenty, but it's good because we're actually able to effectively compact all the retrieved materials, so. Seems to be working well. Uh, next part, we know the kind of an update, I guess we're red with total miles done, so, okay. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right then, so I'm I'm assuming I can see all the uh visitors and uh attendance that are there. Is there anyone else there in person that, there you go. Um, so no visitors, there are citizens to approach the board this morning. Is Brent available?
He's not here yet.
I sent him a text.
Andrew's not there?
Yeah.
Okay, how about Luann? Is that a yes?
Yes.
She had number chair enthusiastically, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, calendar first, um, seven o'clock tonight is the Board of Health meeting, a special meeting um for NIN. Tomorrow, June twelfth at nine AM, um, is Don's turn on K McHugh's Just Talk. At one PM is the Isaac two thousand and twenty-four legislative session wrap-up um webinar for any of you that want to attend that. Also, one o'clock is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for NIN. Thursday, June thirteenth at eleven AM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. I such there's still, they might have canceled that because they're having that training
Yeah.
um, the whole afternoon, so um, that afternoon from twelve-thirty to four-thirty is Mississippi Valley Workforce Training um by Zoom for Don.
I have, I also have interviews for the Veterans Director Thursday afternoon from twelve to four and Wednesday night at six.
Okay. All right, also on Thursday, the thirteenth at noon is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you that want to attend that. Friday, June fourteenth from one to four PM is Together We Build Grand Opening Event for any of you that want to attend that. Monday, June seventeenth at seven-thirty in the morning is an Early Childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for NIN. At one PM that afternoon is a now confirmed Waste Authority meeting uh at the transfer station for Mike. Three PM that afternoon is a Regional Governing Board meeting um in Davenport for NIN. Uh, she's the alternate on that board. At six o'clock Monday night is Together We Build Board Meeting for Don. And at seven PM is the Together We Build Steering Committee meeting for NIN. Also at seven o'clock that night is a zoning commission um meeting for any of you that want to go to that, and that would be done in the basement. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June eighteenth at nine AM. And that afternoon at five o'clock is a Conservation Board meeting at um Spruce Creek Campground for any of you wanting to attend that. The other, only other bit of business I have today is to is to appoint the Jackson County Revolving Loan Fund Committee. There are twelve of them on there. They serve three-year terms, so these terms will expire May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, you have a list in your book. Um, these are people that are chosen by the banks to represent Jackson County, other revolving loan fund committee.
Oh, the whole committee will expire at once?
Correct, correct.
Motion approved.
One second, Pat.
Have a motion and second to approve the revolving loan committee appointments as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carried.
All right, on these uh committees, I guess this is just committee as a whole. I know, I think you say you advertise like once a year for that. Is that true?
It depends. Um, generally, I try to publish once a year the vacancies that we have on all these boards. Um, each board is unique. Sometimes I need a recommendation from the other board members, like in the case of the Senate Chair Commission, they like to make a recommendation. The same is true for the VA Commission. I take a recommendation. Um, if there are vacancies or if I suspect there will be vacancies coming up, um, I will advertise, and I generally do that as a one, as a one advertisement, including all of those. Um, generally, that comes up with the VA Commission because of gender balance, which I believe after July first will never be an issue.
No, I guess, um, I think we should advertise at least quarterly for upcoming um vacancies. I think we should advertise for every vacancy. Then if we choose to reappoint, that's fine, but I think there needs to be a chance for people to know and just not automatically assume reappointment, and uh and this is just my feeling, the other, the other members can speak up, but I just think, and I think we should probably advertise quarterly, just so it's a little bit more time applicable, because if we advertise in like January, February for uh July or August potential vacancy, maybe people in the community don't view it as a you know, it's, I got till August, so I I that's, that's my thoughts, but I would like to see it a little bit more um, time sensitive and advertise an opening, and we can choose to reappoint or look at a new person, but you know, if we just automatically assume reappointment, why would anybody want to apply?
There's a, there's a lot to that, to that, Don. I appreciate that because honestly, in the past year, I've had people approach me and say, I'd like to be involved. Is there any openings on boards and commissions? And to be honest, a lot of times there's not, but they should have the opportunity to apply, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should advertise all vacancies, and if we can do it quarterly, and if people want to reapply for their position, I I I'm I'm for volunteerism and be involved, but I think advertising once a year for vacancies to the public makes it a little harder for somebody new to try to get in, get involved if they want to, so.
The vast majority of the vacancies come up at the end of the year.
Yeah.
That's which is probably exactly why it gets done once a year, because that's when most of them, but I will see what I can come up with and
Okay.
and um usually ask in advance if people wish to be reappointed, so that we don't reappoint them and then have to unappoint them. But I haven't gone the other direction and just.
And then we should advertise the vacancy if they want to reapply, you know, or want to be reappointed.
Okay.
They should say so, and then we can make a determination from there, but it isn't just, hey, you want your job? Sure, okay, then we we should, we should always advertise.
Okay.
Okay, at least that's my feeling.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Luann. All right, I believe I seen Brett there. Is Brett, are you available?
Yep, I am.
We've got Brent, Karen, and Andrew.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning, morning, everyone. Out in South Dakota.
It's awesome. It's unbelievable. You know, we've been out here time and time before, but uh we've got, you, when you bring the side-by-sides, you know, everything's a little slower than the motorcycle, so it's uh you get to see a little more, you take the take the backroads and see the critters, and yeah, it's it's kind of cool.
Yeah, it's beautiful scenery out there. We've been there a time or two as well, so good for you.
Thanks.
Um, so first I want to start off with by saying, uh, last night we got a pretty major incident in jail. Um, had a guy that Macoka PD brought in and he had a, we suspect he had excited delirium. And with those cases, a lot of time those people, it ends, it ends with a result of a death, so. Um, the jail staff and I want to thank Macoka PD for responding immediately because our deputies were coming from the Sebelah area, so we're not anywhere near, but Macoka, the police department deserves a thank you. They helped us out with their officers being close by. It took probably a half a dozen people to restrain this guy and uh get him in the ambulance, get him up to the hospital, and then even at the hospital last night, they were going to air-care him to Iowa City, because even up there, uh, he just was not right. Um, so uh, some quick thinking on Andrew's part, and between him and I, we decided with the charges that we had um, and talking to County Attorney Keys, that we would put warrants up for the remainder of the charges that we were gonna have against him, so that he would not be a inmate in the Jackson County Jail anymore and have to get air-carried to Iowa City. And then we would have had to have jailers stand by on him down in Iowa City as well. Uh, so at the end of the night, they decided not to air-carry him, but they transferred him to water with a ambulance. So we did have to have two jailers stay at the, at the ambulance's request because of his uh, excited delirium that he was still not hundred percent right from. Uh, but uh, thanks to Macoka PD, our jail staff and deputies did an awesome job with him. Uh, hopefully, everything will turn out all right for the guy. Uh, Andrew was up, well, I was up at least until one with that, and you probably didn't leave till about three in the morning dealing with that, so we're a little cloudy because of that, but uh, so anyway, I want to give praise to everybody for how well that went and considering how bad those can go sometimes, so hopefully it all turns out yet, so. But quick thinking, uh, even on Andrew's part, to try to save the county some money there with uh the custody thing with that and good on all that, so. Um, but the primary reason I came today is uh, wanted to tell you, Russ Lons' last day is gonna be July thirty-first. Uh, we would like to offer the full-time position to Kane Cop. Um, and along with that, we are, we drew up a contract uh to pay out part of his contract with the city of Macoka in the amount of three thousand dollars. That's about a third of what he owes them, and that's much cheaper than sending someone to ILA.
That's what the, what they figure they'll have left on his contract for going to the academy or?
No, that's about a third of what he owes them. He's got probably one year out of four uh taking care of that, so we are not reimbursing them the full amount, but we're just trying to give a little peace offering to help lighten the blow to Kane for coming over to us. Then with that, in return for doing that, we've drawn up an agreement that would require him to repay those funds to us if he would leave within twenty-four months of our employment or employment with us, so. So it doesn't complete his contract, we're just trying to help him out a little bit, and then it requires him to sign a new contract with us that kind of guarantees him, you know, give us two years and has a cost to it if he doesn't, so kind of a contract on top of a contract.
Give us a year or two years?
Two years, twenty-four months. Um, but that's a fraction of the cost from what some cities are contracting with these guys. I've heard some horror stories, like but cheaper than sending somebody to the academy if we would have to do that.
So this is going through Becky, and Becky, are you good with this?
I am, yeah. We kind of discussed it in detail and, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That would be my only question. Uh, if that was standard protocol or in the past, or if we move forward like this, or is this on a case-by-case?
Um, we can do a case-by-case. I guess I was just gonna go into how June, July, and August are probably our busiest months for call volume, and it's also the busiest month for obviously, that's when people want to take off to go on vacation or do a trip with the family or whatever. Um, so.
I'd have the extra personnel around Brett, but I was just wondering about the payout, you know, is that standard practice, or is that something that again, will be on a case-by-case? Maybe that's a Becky question, because I don't know if that's been done in the past, you know, I know we have um, as far as training for other situations, we have a payback schedule, but uh, yeah, I was just wondering, I guess.
Yeah, um, it would be something new that we're starting, I guess, uh, as far as you're talking about the pay scale here or the payout.
That three thousand, basically, I mean, we don't, you don't want to just do it for you do it for him, and then somebody else comes along, they have the same scenario going, you don't do it, then do you look at a favoritism?
Right, 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 exactly. I get what you're saying now. I thought you were talking about something different, so, yeah, I think that needs to be probably something because we would want that in return if that happened to us. I mean, I think that's something going forward, we have to consider doing that. Because fortunate for us, we've been able to, so far, been able to, all our new hires are people that are actually experienced and coming from other departments. So that is a huge benefit to us, Mike. Um, we get to know them via them working for someone else before we take a risk on them, because we could send somebody to an academy, put all that money in them, then they come back and they just don't turn out. Because you have no prior knowledge of how they have been an officer uh in those boots out there working, so it's a huge benefit to us to it's kind of like the training camp before they go to the big league, you know? Uh, you get to get that view at them and kind of talk to people and see how they are with the public and all that stuff.
Mike, I guess to answer your question, it would be the the policy that they or the agreement they have drafted would be something that we would use ongoing. The agreement to buy out an officer's contract with another entity would be on a case-by-case basis. If he were first year out of the academy or fresh out of the academy, he might be in debt thirty thousand to the entity, or we probably wouldn't accommodate that. This situation, you know, the the price is right, the personnel is right, so yes and no.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Okay, so, and that's exactly what I was talking about, and me and you have talked about that before, as far as having a policy for educational purposes, and what's the, what's the payback per year, da-da-da. I know it's all a little different for even each department, but I, yeah, I appreciate that, um, that we have something in place that says, yeah, I treated everybody the same here.
I would like to mention also that a lot of entities, when they're headhunting people now for law enforcement, they're offering five to ten thousand dollars sign-on bonuses.
Which is meant to offset. There's a lot of other counties and cities that already have those standard agreements in place. We just haven't necessarily had the need for that. We've talked about it in the past, but this is the first real-life situation that, you know, we'll be implementing it, so.
Yeah, and also part of the, part of the reason why we're not saying, okay, we'll pay the entire remainder of your contract is because there could be a contract out there that's thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
And one year into that, it's like, I don't want to set precedent that I'm paying off twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars either if I don't have to, so it's like, listen, we'll help you out a little bit if that, you know, helps kind of easing the or lighting the wound of having to leave and pay that contract off and come to us, so. Um, yeah, so we'll have to figure that out case-by-case basis, like I said, like Becky said. We'll have to figure that out case by case basis, like I said, like Becky said, so, anyway.
So this is, are you looking for a motion on this or? Um, this is informational?
Yeah, it's kind of just more informational, uh. You know, and I guess I just wanted to explain that July is a really busy month for us. We got the rodeo, the fair, and that's when guys like to take time off, um. You know, that allows Kane to get two weeks prior notice to the city of Macoakata, so he doesn't do them dirty, um, finish up working there, um. You know, Russ is in agreement to work and up until his retirement date. Versus burning his paid time off because if he just leaves, then that leaves us short in July as well. Kane hasn't had an opportunity to get trained up, so he's gonna be in training, he's not gonna be out on his own. Uh, so it's good that Russ is deciding to work until close to his last day anyway. Um, if cop starts now, he can help get trained up, avoid some overtime, provide a smoother transition. Um, and we're losing one of our most experienced officers going out the door. So it allows us to kind of get reset a little bit, and we got a lot going on in July, so. And since Sergeant Groover's resignation, we've actually realized the cost savings by not promoting into that position just yet. Because of the process we want to send them through, um. Next fiscal year will be a considerable reduction in wages because. The cost of Russ is gonna be way more than the cost of Kane just financially. And then when you consider the amount of time that Russ has to burn because of his forty-four years of service. It's considerable as well, so I mean, he can burn a lot of time, so. Um, so we just.
We gotta anticipate a starting date?
I wanna uh, have, I want to offer, but I want to start him no later than June twenty-first if I can. Now, because of two weeks, he will start June twenty-first, he will actually be just wrapping up with Macoakata with his two weeks. And then as soon as he's done with Macoakata, we want to get him working to get him training up, so. So yeah, I'd like to make that offer to him, maybe even right after this meeting.
And off of that, if Russ isn't doing his PTO, then do we have a huge payout when he's done?
So Brent actually budgeted for that payout this year with the anticipation of him retiring, but he pushed his retirement back to July first. I looked at the numbers and the difference of the wages between a new officer Kane and what Russ is making. And the difference in, so historically, we have allowed a five thousand dollar early retirement insurance incentive agreement where we supplement their insurance if they stay on ours or go off by five thousand, up to five thousand a year. So I took into account for that too with Russ and Kane, and the the budget should still be balanced as far as, um. It it shouldn't be, I mean, it'll be tight between using that amount allocated for Russ. And Kane with Mrs. Payout, but it should be doable within the budget.
So, yeah, I guess, uh, kind of informational, but also just, I'm trying to build a good rapport with the board and let them know what's going on. That's what I plan on doing. Uh, hopefully you guys are alright with that, just makes sense on our end to. Get the new one rolling in before the old one actually rolls out, uh, get that rolling, so, um, so yeah. Informational, and and then I guess next, uh, Andrew had some stuff to talk about, and mainly, I guess I'll start off, it's it's mainly. Stuff that we have some funds left in our budget, and there's some stuff that we wanted to buy out or get for the new jail, uh, before this budget closes. So again, more informational. Um, I don't know if you guys want to get into all the details, but we've done the numbers and scratched through the budget, we feel we can. Still purchase these things and still be good before the end of the year. Um, so I don't know if deep into it you guys want to go, but. Just letting you know too that we'll probably be turning some invoices in here at the end of the year yet. And buying some of that stuff out before that too is going on.
So variety of things, um. Uh, new body cameras, um, the interlink into the new jail's security system. The system we currently have is very old, it's no longer supported. Um, we have issues, I think, you probably correct me if I'm wrong, but once something's done with it, it's it's done. There's no coming back or fixing it. Last night being a prime example of why we do need to be able to retrieve body cam footage, that kind of a thing. Um, so this system interlinks with our current jail or our new jail security system. Um, it'll make it much more efficient, there's not multiple programs to use. It's all together and ultimately saves that video. If something would happen lawsuit wise, and I think we're covering by getting rid of a video. It's not gonna be good. Uh, so we're looking to replace those body cams, the ones we have currently are hand-me-downs from patrol that have been replaced.
Yeah, so on that note, we went to these new body cams because Motorola or who was it before WatchGuard? Was WatchGuard got bought out by Motorola, they were no longer going to support the old body cameras. So we had to get new ones to meet the requirements, so we took the old ones and kind of just shifted them to the jail and said, use them till they're. Once they break, they're done, they're junk. They won't support them anymore, but we said use those in the meantime, so we're getting some life out of them yet. Uh, but the times come now where they're they're failing, and so, um.
Did you say these news new ones will be recorded in the? Still on the chest or will it be uploaded into the database?
So record as we passed, and then it the videos themselves will get linked in with the jail security footage. So that way it's all one complete package.
So technically whoever's in the the crow's nest or whatever can watch video from the chest footage?
I don't know if they can watch it live or not, I'm not sure on that, um. Yeah, I can't, I'm not sure on that one. Um, it'd be nice if we can.
Same.
It'd make it a lot easier, yeah.
To be honest, uh, yeah, I mean, there'd be benefit to that too, but I guess the person in the control center, I would sooner during the actual event happening that they watched the overall picture.
Right.
Develop than to watch the body cam part of it, but but it would be nice that it interfaces and uploads and everything.
How much is that?
Um, so this quote is back from October, so I had to get an updated one, but it was thirty-two thousand four eighty-one.
How many?
For how many?
Uh, that is for six cameras, one camera controller, a docking station, a workstation. Installation programming and commission of the body worn system. And that's with SGTS, who is currently doing our security electronics, they're here in town now working on that. So that's something we can probably get instituted right there with them.
So another thing, I guess, before we move to the jail, I should bring up that, so we've got uh, personal vests that our deputies are wearing. Um, they're all expired, uh, I don't know that we have a single one that's not expired, one person reported that there's this.
It was made.
It was made, so that's sixteen years old, you're supposed to replace them every five years.
Bulletproof, that's totally ridiculous.
Yeah, um, so the so what about that is it's. Okay, so if a deputy gets shot or killed or injured or whatever, and they're wearing a vest that's old. I would imagine their spouse is gonna come forward and probably sue us for millions of dollars because we weren't protecting them the way we should have, so. That's the cost to not doing it, so, um, so. Yep.
I'm sorry, I guess a question on the expiration on these vests, is there something that deteriorates? Or can they be recertified? Can they be inspected and recertified, or is that, do they deteriorate to the point or are they just?
Yeah, they won't, they won't inspect them and refurbish them, um. You know, the companies say they're no good after five years, they won't stand behind them. I can tell you when I turned my vest in at Davenport. They threw it away, because it was so disgusting, I mean, would you, just sweating through those things on a hot night in the summer. Uh, the material, it probably degrades it, you know? I don't know, you know, whether they actually do or not, but. That's what the companies tell you, so that's kind of the standard that industry calls.
Are you looking to replace all the vests or?
Yeah, we would probably straight out of the gate try to replace all them, uh, get every deputy up with the current vest, and then after that, we would try to maybe do like two a year. Get in a cycle, now somebody's gonna go with a couple of years, they're gonna be out again as this. You know, rotates through until we can get a cycle going. Um, the good thing is, is Karen and Jim have been working on a fifty percent uh, grant for these vests. So if we spend the money, we should be able to bring fifty percent of that back into the revenue on those, so that's a band, it'll help with that.
Well, I mean.
How many vests are we talking?
Talking probably sixteen vests.
And approximate cost?
Uh, we're looking at worst case scenario, probably about eleven grand.
Good, I I guess, I don't care whether you buy them all at once, I don't, to me. Usually buying both, you get a little better rate that, you know, so I ain't really concerned on this, especially when you're talking eleven thousand dollars roughly, um. Especially get half of it paid for in a grand.
Unfortunately, we can't get the bulletproof vest for the DOJ. If we get these right now, because the grant isn't open and it doesn't go for. We put in five thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-fives budget to start doing this, but since we had money left over. Um, the DOJ will not reimburse the fifty percent for vests that are brought prior to the opening of the grant.
When's the grant open?
No idea as of yet, I keep checking every week.
So you've got five thousand in this new budget starting July first.
Correct.
For this, and you want to use some leftover money from the twenty-three or the twenty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and since we have.
I mean, I look at it. I think buying them both makes sense because a lot of times you do a little better rate.
And that is.
Try to do two and two and two, I don't care, I don't like hearing the the deputies' vests are expired since oh eight.
Yeah, I was a little shocked to hear that myself, um, but.
I mean, I guess my question is, do we know? Do we know the bulk rate cutoff?
This is the bulk rate, I mean.
I know, I know by getting sixteen, you're getting the bulk rate, but if you get ten, do you get the bulk rate? That if you, I'm just saying, if you order ten now, so they come in this fiscal period, and you order ten in two months from now. Or six in two months from now. That maybe six of them could qualify under the grant part part.
Uniformed in for the under carriers, which is what Brent gave you. There is no discount on that, however, we also priced out an RMA, which we call the oh shit vest. That I'm waiting for a callback for a law enforcement call.
What's the, okay, there's two different vests?
There's uh, so like these vests are not, I think it's something reported, things that these are not rated for rifles. These are rated basically for handguns, so when we go to. Calls out in the county where, yes, oh crap vests, uh, there's rifles involved in long range, uh, standoffs and stuff like that. We have another, it's an external plate carrier, kind of like we had in the military. Where it's a additional vest they can grab out of their squad and throw it on to at least protect them front and back from rifle rounds. Um, it's really kind of becoming the industry standard in today's world, also because. You know, when I was at Davenport, we had guys running around shooting AK forty-sevens, uh, down there, which is a seven-six-two or a three-of-eight round. Um, which if you know anything about guns, that's a that's a heavy hitting round, right?
Um, I guess. I'm cool with everybody having a bulletproof vest, and as far as these oh crap things. You know, would this be more like a response thing? Where if you have a certain, you know, because again, you're never gonna have every deputy on on staff. At one time.
Right.
If you had, we don't need, to me, I don't think we need sixteen of these, do we need six or eight of them stashed? Maybe a patrol officer can grab theirs, throw it in a car because they're not gonna get the sweat and all that kind of, they're just at the ready if they want to patrol with it. Or if you have a response where there's a threat, they can be issued.
I don't think that's gonna work because you're gonna be responding from home. Well, I mean, if you're.
Yeah, I mean, it it's not a deal where you can, it's kind of like in the military, if you don't have it with you, you go without it, you know, you gotta have it with you. Um, so otherwise it doesn't, doesn't do any good sitting back in the station, I mean, even. On the major incidents we've had, I've had to run to the station, grab the ram, grab the shield, grab the one helmet we have. And I mean, by the time I get to the scene, generally, that that part is probably over with, you know?
I guess when you're talking about these, what you're, the two different, so from uniformed in or from this place. Are you saying we're gonna get some of this and some of this, or are you saying? To replace the vests you're wearing, we're gonna just go with these? But personally.
The addition to.
Addition to, now I don't care, you know, we can get X amount of undercarried ones, which Brett has on now. Those are level two, which is standard, which does not stop a seven-point-six-two nade around. Um, we can go up with more money that will stop a seven-point-six-two-one, um. Which is just more, and that's on the price breakdown on that stuff I gave you, Don. Um. I think the last page, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I figured the high end of the vest just to not have a shock later that let's just. Throw the high price out there and we'll go from there, but.
And we can buy certain ones for the undercarried ones, for the under, the normal ones that we supply, et cetera. And then we can wait and get more with the fifty-fifty grant too, once that opens up with the DOJ, since we have money in the budget. I have had since started a spreadsheet. Of tracking, and gonna put in issued expiration and reissued of tracking when everybody gets a vest, so we will have everything on a schedule.
Yeah, like I said, in the future, we'd like to get into a rotation where it's a couple of year to where it's not a shock to the system that you find out that. Well, these vests have been for sixteen years already, like, that's long before I got in office, right, so.
Well, the problem, I guess a little bit of the problem I have with the rotation is the fact that you get everybody one today. Then in two years you start rotating, well, there's three years left on that vest or.
Well, I mean, we'd go, you know, we'd have to go, we got everyone new today, they'd be good for five years. And again, okay, so then in five years, then we'd start that rotation. You know, so you'd have to, guys would be wearing a couple that are expired or, you know.
So you, in five years, you're basically stating we're gonna be back at where we're at right now.
But you wouldn't be. It would be a hundred percent everybody expired by that many years, so. You know, guys might be like, well, mine's expired by a year, and the next year somebody might have one expired by two years, but you start to develop that rotation. Either do that, or you just every five years figure, okay, in five years we gotta bite the bullet and figure these into the budget again, you know?
So are you telling me that the life expectancy or life rating on these have not gotten any better? They have still five years and they're expired?
That's what they say.
Okay, so I mean, that's my thought, or my point is. We certainly want to keep our personnel safe, I mean, like, again, with these incidents that we had. Um, there's money left in this year's budget, I don't have an issue with that as far as the vests. Or the, you know, or the, uh. Uh, what were you talking about before that?
The external plate carriers.
Yeah, well, I mean, the cameras too, I mean, as far as that. So, um.
And again, I mean, I'll say it again, everything we do is. In light of trying to avoid liability.
Yeah, and I guess the thing is, unless you have three or four brand new vests that have got four years or five years left on them, and they're wearing them for eight or nine. So be it, I mean, you're telling me I've got vests now that are fourteen years old or sixteen years old? I mean, yes, I'm not opposed to, yeah, I mean, I don't know that you gotta jump every five years and. And buy all new, I think there should be a system somehow to update.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can double back and verify, uh, with the company, like, has the technology gotten any better, but. With ours being as old as they are, you know, me knowing how.
That we know, but going forward, we're kind of. Just trying to figure out a way to get a, maybe even get.
Get a phase in, phase out routine.
I don't want to get rid of a vest that still has three years of life on it.
Oh, no, we won't do that, no.
You know, type of thing, or I don't want it just hanging on a hook because it still has three years of life on it, you know?
Yeah, no, we won't do that.
Trying to get a rotation going that.
To me, it's not an astronomical ask to just rotate them on the fifth year. It's not an exorbitant fee, so.
Yeah.
You know, try and go, well, you, we talk about litigation if somebody gets shot, it's like. Okay, if you can do two and two and two, then you're still got people, well, if it's only one year or two, expired's expired, it doesn't matter, so.
Yeah, I mean, that that's a bridge, uh, we'd have five years to cross that bridge and and like you're saying, maybe we just.
Grants or?
Yeah, maybe in five years we go, okay, we know on that sixth year. We've got to figure this much into the budget, so we can do that too. Hopefully they won't raise the price of those astronomically and it'll be a tolerable amount, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I guess we can only move forward from there.
Yeah.
You need action here?
Not really, I guess, because it's, I mean, it's in our budget, we have it left, I just, I'm just again trying to build a. Understanding, keep an open line of communication and.
So do you have anything more for the the Sheriff's Department before we switch over into the jail? I'm assuming though, and that's the brand, because.
Yeah, that's pretty much, uh.
I'm assuming the cameras for were for you.
Yep, now I do have taser, I remember taser in chapter. Tasers for deputies are also well past their expectancy, um, taser.
Didn't we talk about tasers already like a year ago or something?
I thought we just got new tasers.
We have none.
We've talked about it in the budget session, and you said if we had money left over, because we brought up that tasers, deputies tasers were expired. And you said if we had money in our budget, that we should spend it.
So I'm just trying to get my memory.
Sure, yep, yeah, so, uh, what we're looking at is tasers base entry level taser, uh, fourteen of those. Uh, taser requires you shoot up two cartridges per year in terms of training. Um, each taser holds one cartridge in the bay, a second one in the battery. Um, so total on that, we're looking at twenty-four thousand seven twenty-five. Uh, again, this is their base level model, it's nothing fancy. It's uh, it's truly their base level.
And is this going for the deputies?
This is for the deputies.
So what he's talking about there is. Taser's kind of the only game in town when it comes to these dang things, which is very irritating, and they keep, they keep changing them. It's like when Macoakata had their incident with. It's like when McCoke had their incident with Edwards, taser did not stand behind that. Product, they, they're not gonna stand behind the ones we're currently carrying. So when it comes to lawsuits and litigation, they go, well, your taser's expired, we're, we don't do anything for them. Um, so they keep coming out, it's like vehicles, they keep making a change to it, keep coming out with something. So Andrew said there's about three different models we could go with. And he started describing them to me and there's one that you tilted and then. You know, it switches from this, from short range to long range by tilting it internally, it knows to do that. There's another one where it shoots ten individual different prongs and I kind of got sick of it and I go, all right, give me the most basic. Dumb down taser they make, which is what I carried before I came here, cause I don't even like the side by side cartridge thing we do. And it's basically back to what I carried before. You shoot one, drop it off, you can dry stun with it, with it off, you can reload the one off the bottom of the battery, you get two shots. That's what you get. After that, you gotta drive stunt. But it's the most basic, cheapest model, and I said, give me that, cause I'm tired. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's less complicated because one that you have to tilt and do this crazy stuff with. I said, when you're fighting with somebody, that thing's getting tilted every which way, you don't even know it. I said, to me, that's.
Know what, if you're in long range, short range, sniper.
Right, that's all sales gimmick. I said, I don't wanna hear that crap. I said, give me the most basic, when I pull the trigger, I know the prongs go this far. And it shouldn't work and I've got one more shot after that, after that I gotta drive stunt. I said, I don't want all that crazy fancy crap. Because it just confuses people and they think they're doing this and it's doing something different. I said. Go back to basics. I said, I'm done with chasing taser around and all their stupid, they're, they're overthinking it and making it too complicated. And it's making it harder for people to train on them and use them. I mean, they, it like a gimmicky, they have what's called the X three, they had three shots and that thing was this wide. And then they had a shotgun at one point that was absolutely worthless. I mean, it just, they come up with gimmick stuff and this is the way to go with it, it's the cheapest. It's the one that's been dependable for a long time, a- and it's gonna be successful.
Like maybe the. How long are they good for?
Five years.
Five years?
Yep.
The only staggering one to hear is the tasers and the vests can't be on the same fighter site.
That makes sense.
You know? All by themselves, they end exorbitant, you start adding them together where it's.
Oh, I agree. And like I say, unfortunately, I'm kind of getting caught, it's kind of coming to light this year. It's like, we got all these expired vests. Our tasers expired, I'm like, ah crap, you know, so yeah, it's catching me. This, this was before I got here even, but now I gotta deal with it because now that I'm aware of it, what do I do? Turn a blind eye to it? You know, so now I gotta address it. Um, but fortunately, we've, uh, been frugal through the year. And, uh, we've kind of declined doing some stuff. I mean, there's been some schools we haven't gone to, some stuff I didn't do. Anyway, long story short, we've got some funds left, so we figured, well, rather than just give that up, now's the time to take advantage of that and. And capitalize on that before it's too late. Um.
We've often been to the point where we're, we're not spending money to spend money, but if it's needed anyway. And it's time to do it, it probably makes sense.
Are we gonna have?
If these all figure into, um, your budget yet, uh. Uh, maybe Lisa has a. Uh, better idea or she knows if this is gonna work for us?
I'll have to look at it.
Are we gonna have the same conversation for jailers with tasers?
So ours are currently. About three and a half years old.
Good.
So about a year and a half we'll be looking at, beginning that, um, so the sevens, the way they're doing those is what we have, they are on a. Five-year contract divided over five years that cost. So, we put in so much.
Is there expiration on the tasers?
Five years, yes.
Why haven't we done the contract with the sheriff's department?
That was bef- before, that wasn't like their system back then, so they've done like a lease program. With the tasers, right?
Correct, yeah.
Well, then I would ask, have we done a cost comparison versus buying them outright like this or doing the contract?
Yeah, that's probably something you need to have that conversation.
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah, we gotta, we got a little more follow up to do with them, um, so.
I guess my question is though, if you're looking at getting them in this year. We're gonna be out of time, we pay next week. So. I mean, out of ordering these vests and ordering these tasers, what's gonna be able to be here in a week?
Well, the invoice has to be in this week, uh, don't we have until the end of the month for the stuff to arrive? That was my understanding from the past.
The product has to be here before we can pay for them, so. I mean, if you tell us it's gonna be X amount of dollars next week. Then we will hold that check. We would not support an ACH payment, we would hold those checks. Because they have to be here. Um, so we don't get flagged on the audit.
Alright, okay. Yeah, I guess I, from the past, I thought the understanding was they had to be here by the end of the month.
The pro- so the product.
Just like your squad cars, you know, we won't pay for a squad car unless they're here.
Is there the complication with, is it a handwritten warrant or whatever? If, if it doesn't come on the normal.
I can't give a handwritten warrant, I'm not authorized to do that, so I'd have to bring it before the board. And we'd have to do a special. A special, uh, claims period, cause I would not, I could not do a handwritten warrant. I think until you do some research, I think that would be my suggestion is go back. See how soon, I mean, just maybe they're six weeks out, I don't know. So then I could not support cutting a check out of this year's budget and having a. We can't, we can't have the check laying in our, in our safe.
I will contact taser and see if I can get that.
Yeah, I think that's where we're at, is we just need to see the timeframe for everything.
Okay.
Where do they come from?
Uh, Arizona. I believe they're based out of somewhere, Arizona.
If they're readily available, I mean, shipping could be here really quick. I mean, you could even overnight it for the weight of them, I would think, but the point is. Again, we gotta follow protocol, so let's, I mean, if we should have been thinking about it sooner, so be it, but let's see if we can get it done.
Will do.
And, but I'm looking at here, it looks like you got a total of around sixty-five thousand that you spoke of. You had thirty-two for the cameras, you had eleven thousand approximately for the vests and. Or, or twenty-four something for the tasers?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, uh, moving into the jail stuff. Um, few things I'm looking at here, so I got go back from our jail supply company. Um, originally we're looking at around nineteen thousand, um, from them for purchasing. Inmate uniforms, inmate clothing, um, for. The various suicide smocks, we need a wheelchair, um, utensils, blankets. Hygiene, suicide cut down knives. Um, a fingerprint ink holder, so we don't have to drill into the cabinets, um. Property storage, inspection mirrors for doing cell searches. Um, some hazmat coverings if we have someone that decides to smear poop or something else like that. Inmate shoes, um. Inmate cleaning kits that are shank free, so they can be used very easily as weapons. More clothing. Uh, that's essentially, and, and then a walkthrough metal detector. So like I said, we were originally around twenty thousand. I got that down to a little over, well, right around thirteen thousand, talking to her and trying to negotiate prices. Um, with adding the metal detector, we'd be looking at sixteen thousand five fifty-one for that stuff. So essentially, we're saving about two grand and we're getting this metal detector for free through negotiating the prices.
And I find it hard to believe you're gonna have that here by the end of fiscal year.
I will push and push and push and tell her we need it, but that is what we're looking at for opening for the new jail. Um. The next thing then is just in the booking process.
Question on any of that, Andrew, so are we taking any of our other stuff with us?
Everything we can will take with us. A lot of it is garbage. I mean, we have a lot of stuff that's just been used and used and used and it's stretched out. Snaps are broken off the jumpsuits, uh, they're not.
Well, I'm just thinking like where you're talking about mirrors and blanket, you know?
Right, so we just don't have the volume, but we will carry over what blankets we have. We'll carry over the suicide smile we have, we just need additional based on volume. Um, but yeah, so that stuff we'll carry over, um. But some stuff, like I said, has just been used to the point where it's just junk.
You talked about a, an ink holder for the fingerprinting. In the new jail, we're not digital?
We are, however, it's the ability, if that goes down. We've had it in the past where I Karen had to submit it manually for six months, seven months.
Around there.
Yeah.
Lot of work.
So what this is, is this is just a mounted thing, it's mounted to itself, I guess, but you can set it on a table and it holds the cards. Or likewise, if we have someone that's coming in to get fingerprinted for work. For an application type process, and we have somebody in the holding cells that is just wild. Or something along those lines where it's disruptive, we have that ability to take it up front and do it up front. So it's a cost of like two hundred and ten dollars, but it's, it makes a lot more options for us. Back to you, like the beds and the sheets and stuff, so. Uh, and you got to realize in where it might be just more cost effective to have two blankets rather than put a sheet on the mattresses. Um, some other jails are doing that. Uh, so like, yeah, do that, it's cheaper and, uh, it's actually probably a little less liability because it's, uh. Harder to hang yourself on the blanket than it is a, a sheet. Stuff like that, so I said, yeah, just eliminate the sheet then and give them another blanket and. You know, they can lay on that one on top of the mattress and cover up with another one. Absolutely. And then, um, like inmate pens and stuff in here too, we're ordering those. They are shank proof, so it's hard to try to stab with them, but it's also all washable ink with water. So if somebody writes on the walls, it's as simple as taking a wet washcloth and wiping it off. So that way hopefully eliminate damage to the new facility.
So when you say shank group, that just means really flimsy?
Really flimsy, yeah, hard to stab somebody with. Yeah.
Okay.
Hard to hurt yourself or someone else.
Just, like, the shape doesn't really change.
Right. I'm very flimsy.
I, I was thinking you were gonna be Michael, like.
Yeah, it's kind of rubbery. Yeah. Um, so then we're looking at. I- in terms of the paperwork aspect, cutting down paperwork, I mean, the. And Karen's the one that handles the majority of this, but the level and the number of open records requests. Is ungodly right now. So we're trying to move towards as much of a paperless system as possible. And likewise, moving into that new facility, you're gonna be moving files around constantly left and right, it's gonna be a pain in the butt. So I talked with Delaware County, what they have through Shield, which is our records management system. Is an e-signature add-on, so what that is, is in the booking room. There's a signature pad attached to the system, they sign on the signature pad. It attaches to the system permanently. We don't have that need for that hard copy of the record. It, it makes it so much simpler and ultimately more efficient, easier for Karen and doing these endless open records requests. So that's fifteen hundred for that capability through Shield. How many open record requests so far this year?
About two hundred and fifty-four, the longest one was Richards, which was sixteen hours of my time. And the scanning in with the signature pad, because I have to get the originals. Because when we open our Shield Records Management System, I have most of the information, but not the actual inmate signature. Of their property, which will again reduce liability because they get booked in. They sign their property receipt, when we release them, they sign the additional property receipt that they've got everything back, so I'm talking two things. Liability and open records. But it has this signature already stored, we're not gonna have a paper copy, I don't have to go dig through boxes of stuff to find these signatures of everything. And then do all the redaction that way.
So one advantage of technology, the electronic over the old manual or. Handwritten signature and stuff or, is that. With the electronics, you can search in the computer to go find the stuff with the old paper stuff. You got tubs and tubs and tubs of paper and I gotta sit there and search through that crap manually. Um, I mean, you get to the point where you almost need another full-time employee just to do stupid open records.
Our new system didn't come with the pad.
Uh, so this, this system is separate, this is our record system, so this is what's used by dispatch. It's used by the jail civil. Um, Karen, this is basically just our internal county law enforcement system.
So this is where sheriff side and the jail side?
All of us.
All of it.
Yeah, it's all one joint system.
And then we won't be printing out as much paper, um, and it'll be a savings of paper and ink and time employees wages. Of doing all this stuff, cause record management, you go to the inmate or whomever. Open it up, print it out, everything's right there.
Pause. Is there time sensitivity to the canvassing attend?
No, that's okay.
And I'm just about done, it's like, two more pages of. And on that, so I just mentioned that, so every time. I won't say a name, but somebody comes into the courthouse and hangs out down at the county attorney's office. And we have him on body cam, that he does that because it's clear that there's some kind of intent there. Um, then that's followed every time by a request for the body cam and the, it's a FOIA request every time that guy comes into the courthouse. That his attorney submits for. Just games being played, um, so then that's, that again bogs the system down because, you know. They're just searching for something to be. Obscure about.
So the orange got all the cameras in the courthouse for me downloaded for that individual and his son. And then I have to go through all the body camera from the start of the trial. Until he was convicted and everything else for body cam.
Yeah, but all this stuff has secondary and tertiary effects. Boggs our office down, Boggs Karen down, Boggs going down and it's.
And on the side note, the county attorney's office is very appreciative of the locked door that they have.
Yes.
Missed a couple of times now, so.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I was in there the one day, um, working on some stuff, the county attorney's office when that person showed up and. It worked out very well, they were able to keep themselves safe and now let them in, so, and he was looking for a fight. Sorry, no, you're good. Um, last few things I have, the one is, so it's a, it's called ball cam camera. And what this is, is this is used to take mugshots. Pictures of tattoos, et cetera, and that takes it directly onto our record system. So currently, right now, what we're doing is we've got an old Canon Powershot from about two thousand eight and we're taking it all manually. So then what we have to do is we have to upload it, each individual picture after the fact. Uh, so for example, tattoos, we take pictures of everybody's tattoos, there's times when you have people that they're covered in tattoos. Unfortunately, when you're trying to go back after the fact and enter what it is. You don't know always what it says, if there's writing, you can't read, something like that. And it can be a very time-consuming process. So what this does, this takes the picture live on Shield, the record system. And can be entered all manually as you do it, rather than having to take the photo and go back in and try to decipher it later. Um, much more efficient time-wise, better quality mugshots that can be used easier in the purpose of a photo lineup. Um, and it's really going to help out that way, um, eighteen ninety-five is what that is. So to expand on that a little bit, better quality mugshot, when people claim they've been injured by the deputies or whatever. In a fight or whatever, they come in, that mugshot can be important for that because. Were they injured when they come in or did they do that after they got in the jail to themselves or whatever? So again, um, I can tell you that there's examples of, you know, sometimes it's been. Two people that are twins or they're family members and they look so identical that. It's really the tattoos that will separate them from when the officer's on the street dealing with them. We rely a lot on jail photos and stuff like that to say, what do they have for tat- scarves marks, tattoos? And that will determine if somebody's trying to use somebody else's information out on the road, uh, to get. Pull one over on the, on law enforcement, so.
It's part of Iowa code that we get photos, scars, marks and tattoos.
I'm sorry. Uh, lastly, it's just some storage containers for inmates, um, that they keep their personal belongings in, their commissary, that kind of a thing. Legal paperwork, uh, we'll just need more of them, we'll carry over the ones we have, but we'll need additional. Um, and then some carts, uh, a medication cart, a housekeeping cart, laundry cart, a rolling trash bin. Um, a- and then with the volume of potential transports over to the courthouse or district court. We are gonna need one or two additional, um, transport restraint kits. Um, pretty minimal, controls their hands, uh, there's a waist chain that controls their chain, or. Controls the handcuffs to their waist, um, leg irons and the chain also runs down through the leg irons, makes it hard for them to run. Sort of is gonna need about two more of them, but other than that, that's all I have. More escaping.
The two questions I'm gonna have there is, uh. One. There's gonna be a significant total of this, I think we're probably pushing somewhere between eighty and ninety thousand dollars total, of which some of you say for the jail. And to me, I'd like it divided between what's going to the law enforcement. And what we can use jail. And what we can use jail money.
How much was the last that you were talking about? Totes, carts, chains, and it was that?
Yeah, a- approximately twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Were you figuring all this out of this year's budget yet?
I believe so, we're able to, yeah. By our estimation.
You have a lot of work to get done here in three days.
Yeah.
Because.
We're dedicated.
We'll see.
I don't know if you could drive to Arizona and pick them up by then, but you know, I'm just saying.
I volunteer.
I can do it, Mike. I've done it.
All right, well, let's, I, I would say at this point, let's see what we can get our hands on and, and make a move here. We're, I think we're burning daylight, to be honest.
Yeah, the only other thing I feel I better throw in there is, uh, so we figured a hundred and fifteen for squad cars for this budget year. Um, and I figured they'd be higher than that, so they're about twenty-five higher than that. So the total coming in is gonna be right around a hundred and forty from what we're being told. So, but we also have that in the budget, so, cause I always like to figure high and plan worst case and.
Again, are they gonna be here?
Yes. Second one should be arriving today.
Good. The paperwork will get over here.
Yes, it will. I've already, I've already had those conversations.
Thank you.
So.
Just made me cringe when I seen it going flying down the highway and I asked Lisa, when the new squad car comes in? She's like, I don't have a clue.
Wow, and so I've been in to see Lisa yesterday about, cause we, we had two chargers, both same year and everything, and I wanted to make sure we took the insurance off the correct one. Cause I'm still driving the other one as much as I hated. And also on that note, I also had Carl's transfer the cage from the other charger into my charger to make it a. More versatile that I could haul prisoner in it, cause my charger never had a cage in it. That's why I took it when Terry Rolling retired, because I didn't. I can't give it to anybody on patrol. So for a minimal amount of money, basically what they did is. For the cost of transferring the cage into the same year charger, they upped our trade-in value on the charger we traded in, so it was a wash, so. Um, I was appreciative that Carlos did that for us, but now I at least have a cage in my car that can be used for putting prisoner in, cause I haul the prisoner. In the front seat one night and he probably isn't somebody who went all in the front seat, but I told him what I'd do if he did anything funny, so we had an agreement, um. Yeah, so, um.
They seem to look like they want to say so.
I do, I have a question. So the question is refrigerators?
Yes.
So I talked to John Hanson yesterday, um. There was a question from one of you concerning if the E O C Ashley Henson Grant could pay for one of those refrigerators? The answer is no.
Okay.
I already asked that question too.
Who did you hear that from? Okay. So anyway, just so you know, um, do they have the, okay, they, there was a discussion, do you want them to go to someone else to get a second quote? That was another question that.
Running out of time now.
Well, so that's, and John is out of the area right now, so I've gotta talk to him this afternoon.
So and we would have to have those refrigerators here.
Yep.
By July one or before July.
Yes.
I guess also going forward with that. You know, do we? The one had three refrigerators, one for your break room, one for the E O C and one for the kitchen.
Yes.
Do we truly need three refrigerators?
So ideally, we wanna.
I get that they're minimal amounts, but still with all the stuff we have to buy, I mean.
So.
One of them refrigerators could be your photo shot upload syst-, you know?
Right. So i- in terms of the jail, one, the reason we need to have one in the jails, I just wanna keep the jail staff in the jail. We don't want them going out in the. Sheriff's Office department where necessary because.
That's small under the counter.
There's a small, right, there's like a little under the counter one. So we need that one in the kitchen because we got nailed by the health inspector previously about the people, obviously.
I get the kitchen one. I'm just wondering why we need, cause these were all big ones.
Right.
In the kitchen, in the break room, in the E O C, it's like.
Was there two in the evidence?
And then two evidence ones besides, besides, and then it had a couple little smaller ones.
So in the evidence room, what we initially wanted was like a commercial one with two big doors. Um, the problem is, in the evidence, so. To do it cheaper, we decided we just price out two individual ones that could just sit there with each other. The problem why we need the space, the volume in the evidence one is because of. Like sex assault kits, if they've been refrigerated, if evidence has been refrigerated, you have to keep it refrigerated. You can't let it. Dot or anything, and we have to keep those sex kits as far as I know, wherever. So I suppose until the person may not pass away or maybe the suspect. And the victim passed away, I suppose is maybe when you could get rid of them, but from the conversations I've had with Sergeant Beck, it's like, yeah, you can't, you're stuck. You know, you got them, you gotta keep them. I mean, I got a little fridge in my office that's chuck bull. Can't fit one more in and it's sitting in there running. That's a little college dorm refrigerator full of sex kits and I mean, we've shoved them in everywhere we can get them in. So, um.
With time being what it is, I think we need to. Proceed.
Yeah. I guess the last question I would have is, uh, would you guys be willing to allow a claim period effective, uh, June twenty-eighth yet?
No, cause we're not meeting that day. We're not meeting on June twenty-eighth, correct? Friday?
The Friday. There is no special meeting. For that.
Not unless you're gonna schedule one, but. We don't, maybe what you're referring to is years ago, we had, we used to have to count cash. We always had the end of the year where we counted cash and such, and we no longer have to do that, so. Um, our last meeting of the fiscal year is June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I was just asking, maybe we could. Back that up or have one more meeting on the twenty-eighth to have that final claims period, but that would help us out.
I guess that's possible if it's needed. I, I don't know that there's a. Whatever, whatever it takes, I guess. But again, I think we're burning daylight here if you, if you guys are making a large amount of plans.
I would say, I would say, let's see where you're at before the eighteenth, so maybe we could look at the twenty-fifth and totally, right now, we're, we're.
Yeah.
We're gonna kick this big if it's gonna get to run.
Yep.
And we'll see where we're at.
Yeah, we're working on it.
I mean, but I don't wanna complicate, you know, if trying to cram one in. At the last minute, I don't know the ramifications of what happens to the.
On the backside.
The, the bookkeeping aspect, so, yeah. So.
Yep.
Give us your board next week. Let us know where you're at.
And last, uh, Mike, if you guys keep working on that, getting the, uh. The medical bills out of the county's hair. At the state level, and if you guys want me to work that from the legislative committee angle for the Sheriff's Association, I will do that.
I think we all have to work that angle and, and again, we got an email last week, we all did about legislative priorities. Don't be afraid to speak up with your mind here, people. Get, get out there, even if you call our representatives or, you know, our legislators and, uh. Put a bug in their ear again, shake them up.
Yep. No, I'll work that from our angle because. Um, apparently have a voice and I'm not afraid to speak up, so. Um, I would love to see that. That would take a lot of craziness off of the counties and a lot of burden and. It would just resolve a lot of things. I don't understand why they can't stay on Medicaid, Medicare. When they're on that, when they come in and why they get kicked off of it. It makes no sense. Um, but that would relieve the burden on the counties as well, and then we can plan our budgets easier, so. Because just like.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, let me think here. Where are we at? Are we down to, uh, canvassing first, Lisa, or your portion? What would you like to?
I'll do my portion first, if it's okay with you, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June third, twenty twenty-four board proceeding as written by August Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
Certainly.
The motion is second, prove the, and, uh, publish the minutes as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve a cigarette permit to S N K Gas and Food, which is the Attic Creek Station. At eighteen eight twenty Bellevue Cascade Road Zwingel, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the permits as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the May eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission minutes and publish as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve resolution number ten forty-one dash zero six dash eleven dash twenty twenty-four. Canceling outside, outstanding warrants in the Jackson County Auditor's Office in the amount of three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
This was for.
It's just an annual kind of cleanup of some old claims that have not been. Um, canceled yet, so we just, we cancel them and then they still have time to come back with proper proof to get paid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve, uh, signature on the in. Engagement agreement between Jackson County and Alars and Cooney P C. In connection with the preparation and adoption of a twenty-eight E agreement related to funding nine-one-one communication services within the county. So I didn't know, Mike, will you sign this or do you want someone else to sign it?
Well, I thought in the, my agenda that it was gonna be signed by the vice chair either way. I, if you can wait for me, that's whatever you need to do there. If you need to get it done.
I, I wasn't sure how to word my motion. If you wanted to do, you want Don to go ahead and we'll get it signed and sent in.
It, that's fine.
Then I guess I ask for a motion for vice chair signature. So moved.
Thank you.
Did Dodd second that then?
Yes.
A motion is second to approve the vice chair's signature on the agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
So that takes care of my agenda portion for today. Um, the next thing on my agenda is to canvas. Last Tuesday's primary election. Just a few notes. That people that went to the polls last Tuesday were one thousand six hundred and sixty people. Um. A total of two thousand and four people voted overall, so those re- uh, three hundred and thirty-five people.
Two thousand four hundred and forty?
Two thousand and four, two zero zero four voters voted at the polls or, uh, by absentee. Um, there's kind of some, so just so you know that we had a ninety-five percent return rate on absentee ballots. That's really good. That's really good. Um, we did have some provisionals. The absentee board did come back in yesterday. And those votes, all six ballots did count, so we had none of those that were rejected. And with those, those provisional ballots coming back, Jackson County overall had a thirteen point seven five percent. Um, turnout, which is really good. I've seen some posts, um. Where it was as low as four percent in some counties. So I think the state average was eight. I think this, there's other counties I saw that had four percent. So Jackson County having thirteen point seven five percent is actually pretty good. Um, we did have an absentee ballot that was rejected because it did arrive after the due date, so. We try and encourage people to get those absentee ballots back to us and, um, I signed the paperwork to send to this person to. Um, notifying them that, that the ballot, um, was not opened and it was not, um, was not run through the scanner. Um, so just my motion today then, and there's a significant amount of signing that I will need to have you do, so. Um, my motion today then is to authorize the board and auditor. To sign the official state of Iowa abstract of votes in the official canvas of elections, showing who received the most votes as follows. Democratic, uh, Christina Bohannon and Republican Marionette Miller Meeks for U S Senator District One. Democratic Andy McKeon and Republican Stephen P Bradley for State Representative District Sixty-Six. Democratic Kay Pence and Republican Norland Mumson for State Representative District Seventy. Republican Mike Steinis for Board of Supervisors District One and no Democratic candidate. Republican Elisa Smith for auditor and no Democratic candidate. Republican Brett J Kilburg for sheriff and no Democratic candidate. And no candidates were nominated for the Libertarian Party for any office, and I also need the motion to forward all paperwork to the Iowa Secretary of State.
So move.
I'll second that, all of that.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah.
Kid.
Yeah. You know what? Oh, I'll wait for the vote, sorry. If Mike is still on. Um, I'll wait, I'll, I'll talk while Mike is.
Mike?
Sorry about that. I just, I don't wanna get in the way when I, I don't want too much background noise, but, uh. Um, so I got a motion and a second to approve the canvas and the paperwork, um. Supported to the state to be finalized for authorization or whatever. What's your favorite word?
Yes.
Certification?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried and thanks everyone for their support and, uh, ongoing and going forward and for everybody that did go out and vote.
You know what? All in all, you, I've spoken this before, you know, unfortunately, we've had to talk on, you know, the Wednesday after elections that. We grade ourselves and sometimes we, unfortunately, we've had elections where we've had C minus and, and D elections, you know, we've had issues, but I will tell you that. Um, from the beginning of the day till the ending of the day. Um, we really had a great day last Tuesday. We had minimal problems, which was great. And so our grade for this election, we gave ourselves a, a very high B plus to an A minus, and that's. That's really a lot of thanks needs to go out to the people that support us by being runners and picker-uppers and delivery people and all of our election officials, so. Um, I hope we can continue that into November election.
Yeah, I think everything went smooth for a while, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was a good day. And that's all then that I have for the board.
You're not talking to us. Your views.
I thank you for all your hard work, Lisa and your staff, and make sure you pass that along, please. And, uh, you know that it's not easy and it's time consuming and it's a late evening and an early morning and. We appreciate that. I wanna thank everybody for their support and hopefully that, uh. We can move forward in a positive way and, uh, I, again, I just appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you. That's all I have for the board.
Anything else before the board this morning?
Just a. Reminder that together we build, uh, open houses from one to four this Friday. And, uh, they will have a small ceremony about two o'clock and. Get, if you wanna see the building, that'd be a great chance, a great time to do it. I know they're still looking for donations for their, uh. Their brick wall that you can, if you'd like to donate to them to kind of help get over the finish line for fundraising, um, it's a great place.
Open for rent. Anybody want to name it in a spot?
I appreciate it and again, pass on my support for them, uh, please, if you would, uh, and, uh, again. Stay safe, I guess, and is there anything else before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A opposed, motion carried. Have a great week, everyone.
You're gonna say so.